Good evening. Thank you for attending the Twinsburg Board of Education regular meeting of Wednesday, April 18th, 2018. We call the meeting to order at 7 o'clock. Mrs. Powers, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Mr. Solura?
Here.
Mr. Felber?
Here.
Mr. Curtis?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Here.
If you could please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good evening, and thank you for attending tonight's meeting. We have a lot of important things and students to celebrate this evening, so I'll try to keep this report short. On May 8th, voters in our communities of Twinsburg, Reminderville, Twinsburg Township will be voting on Issue 3, the 6.9 mil renewal levy for our district. As I have stated previously, this levy has been in effect since 1993 and has been successfully renewed every five years since. This levy generates approximately $4.8 million, 10 percent of our annual operating budget. I want to thank the countless number of community members who have volunteered their time, placed a sign in their yard, written letters of support, and helped to spread the word and garner support for this levy. This is a vital part of our budget and will allow us to continue providing the high-quality programming and opportunities that our students currently have access to. While I fully respect each and every person's right to their opinion of this levy and its importance, it has become increasingly disturbing to me to see so much false and unvalidated information being put out in public as truth. One of these mistruths that has become popular lately is that this levy will increase our taxes based because of the recent property reappraisals done by the county. This could not be farther from the truth. In 1976, House Bill 920 was enacted, which put a freeze on a school district's voted mills. This means that once a levy is passed and voted on, since 1976, the income received from that levy is frozen the moment it's passed. The only increase that comes from each voted levy would be a one-time increase for new construction. Therefore, when some county reappraises property values every three years, if values increase, the auditor cuts our tax rate to keep our collection amount at the same value as it was previously. The increase in your taxes is not attributed to this renewal levy or any other voted-on levy that the district currently receives. This, in tandem with the vast discrepancies between districts and state monies received per student, is a main reason why we continue to seek the support of the local community in levy passage. We realize that how education is funded in this state is not proper or with the best interest of the students in mind. We continue to advocate for proper per pupil funding and a fair formula. However, we cannot throw caution to the wind and not plan for nothing to be done, as has been the case for 20 years with funding in this state. We will continue to budget accordingly, we will continue to forecast conservatively, and we will continue to use our cash reserves only when necessary. Not doing so would be foolish and would endanger our ability to ensure our students that they receive the full education through high school. I would strongly urge our community members to thoroughly research any outlandish claims that they may hear or see. Your administration and board are always open to answering questions with facts and figures, not emotion and conjecture. This levy is an important part of our education and one that this administration board and previous boards have highlighted for years on our strategic planning flow chart. There has been no secrecy surrounding this levy or any of the other two in this renewal cycle, and any statement contrary to that is demeaning and untrue. This administration, staff, and board work hard with the dollars that this community entrusts us with, and we continue to provide great opportunities and programming to our students. That will not be possible without the passage of this levy. In closing, I would like to thank the councils of the village of Reminderville and the city of Twinsburg for passing resolutions recognizing the quality education we as a district provide and formally supporting Issue 3. As you head to the polls on May 8th or as you're filling out your absentee ballot, please vote with your head. Vote with facts and vote with your conscience. Support your children, support your grandchildren, support your neighbor's children, and your community, and vote yes on Issue 3. And that concludes my president's report. Superintendent Powers?
Thank you, Mr. Solura. Good evening, Board of Education. Good evening, families. So good to see everybody here, especially our kids. It's always a delight to celebrate students, but before we get to that, there are a number of announcements to make. First and foremost, Board of Education, I'm really nervous tonight because Mr. Aho is not here. He's at a OASBO's conference in Columbus. Mr. Welker's not here, so I have the responsibility of calling the roll. And, boys and girls, I've never done this before. So if I make a mistake, I'm sure the Board of Education will be very kind to me, right? That's what we do when we make mistakes, right? So we'll see how this goes tonight. Anyhow, good evening, everyone. I'm glad that you're here tonight. To a serious matter here, on Saturday, April 14th, members of our school community gathered with the family of Courtney Jones to celebrate her life. Courtney was a beautiful child who attended George G. Dodge Intermediate School. Courtney is the daughter of Cordell and Alicia Jones and the sister of Cory Jones, who is one of our eighth-grade students. Following is an excerpt from Courtney's obituary. Courtney was a beautiful, joyous, creative, loving, and intelligent 11-year-old girl. She loved her family, friends, community, and school. Courtney began her education in Solon, Ohio, and transferred into the Twinsburg City School District as a proud Tiger. She studied as a sixth grader at Dodge Intermediate School and was a straight-A student. Courtney had many talents and abilities. She excelled in dance, loved arts and crafts, shopping, swimming, ice skating, sparkle fashion, and glam decor. Courtney loved to travel, planned parties, play video games, visit amusement parks, sing pop songs, watch movies, practice karate, watch Broadway theater shows and Cavs games. Simply put, Courtney had an unbridled passion for life. Courtney aspired to be a doctor and go to medical school. She wanted to be an award-winning doctor, in fact, an artist, a businesswoman, and a philanthropist. She wanted to help children and families deal with critical illness. She also wanted a second home in Paris, France. Courtney was on the path to accomplishing all of these dreams. Would you please join me in a moment of silence as we remember this very special child? Indeed, Courtney was a special child. Her unbridled joy for life is an inspiration for all. Courtney will be deeply missed by all who had the great fortune to know her. And I hope that everyone please keeps Mr. and Mrs. Jones and their son Cory, as well as the entire Jones family, in your thoughts. This has been an extremely tough couple of years, as a matter of fact, but they certainly did not expect Courtney to pass the way she did, unexpected about a week ago. And just imagine, it's the worst thing a parent can live through. So we keep them in our thoughts and our prayers and wish them well as they move forward through their grief. Switching gears again, I guess it's that kind of a night, right? I am absolutely delighted to announce to you the exciting news that Wilcox Primary School is a 2018 OAESA Hall of Fame school. And our administrators are here tonight, Ms. Lynn Villa and Mr. Scott Asti. And if there are any teachers, if you kindly stand to be recognized, this is huge news And just a little bit about being a Hall of Fame school. The Hall of Fame School Award recognizes schools that engage faculty, students, and the community to provide a high-quality school experience. Wilcox Primary School is a child-centered place where administrators, staff members, parents, and community members collaborate so that all of our students can reach their fullest potential as Wilcox Tigers. Wilcox Primary School staff submitted an extensive application documenting the effectiveness of their educational program in several areas. Hall of Fame schools were chosen by two committees of OAESA members, one of which read and scored the applications, and the other that conducted an onsite evaluation of qualifying schools. And in the report, it says, "The staff at Wilcox has invested in every student, making it a collaborative environment that is accepting of all students." So we're so excited. And in fact, the OAESA Executive Director is expected to be at our next board meeting on May 2nd, and we will be celebrating Wilcox Primary School at that time. So Ms. Villa and Mr. Asti and the entire staff, we look forward to all of you being here, and, boys and girls, if you want to come too, the next board meeting, which is May 2nd, and it'll be an event of celebration for all of the hard work and all of the wonderful things, all of the wonderful programs, and all of the collaborative efforts, not only with our staff, but with our parents especially, great partners in what we do at Wilcox, and with our community members too. So we're going to be excited to have a little bit of a celebration on May 2nd. Speaking about Wilcox, kindergarten parents, it's time for the incoming class of 2031 to register for kindergarten. Parents of children who will be five years of age before August 1st, 2018, are asked to visit the district website and then click on the "For Parents" tab, scrolling down to access registration information. Once there, you'll be asked to create an account, and then you'll be asked to complete the preregistration information. Kindergarten registration will be held at the Twinsburg Community Center on May 9th, 10th, and 11th, but again, you need to complete the preregistration information and schedule an appointment online before one of those three dates. As always, feel free to give Ms. Villa or Mr. Asti a call over at Wilcox Primary School. They're always happy to talk with their parents, and they'll be happy to answer any questions about the incoming class of 2031. That's an amazing thing. Board of Education, yesterday I had the four senior standouts as my guests on Twinsburg Schools Today Show. So that's the class of 2018 out one door and the class of 2031 in the other door. So it's an exciting time here in our school district. Speaking of exciting, best of luck to our Twinsburg High School Concert Band, who is headed to their state competition this Friday, April 20th. It is going to be held at North Royalton High School, and they didn't get to pick their time to perform in the competition. Their time to perform is 9:45 PM. So, good thing the students don't have school on Friday, especially our high school students, so they can sleep in and then get ready and go over to North Royalton High School. We're simply delighted and excited for them. This is a big deal for the concert band to be in the state competition. So we wish Mr. Bonnetz and all of our very talented musicians the best of luck at the state competition. Board of Education, we've had a busy couple weeks with our community conversation about adolescent mental health, which was a fantastic presentation about a week ago. That was followed by our Tiger Spirit Fun Run on Sunday. And, boys and girls, if you were here, I know you had an extra shower that morning because it rained on you, but I think we had a lot of fun, fitness, and fun that morning. And then, of course, we had our pancake breakfast at the high school afterwards. And we want to thank all of the volunteers who helped the Blue Ribbon Schools Committee host the pancake breakfast on Sunday morning. Board of Education, in your packet this evening, you have a copy of our spring newsletter. I'm excited for our families to read. This is just chock-full of great news about the school district, a lot of students that we're celebrating. This will come home in the Twinsburg Bulletin as an insert on the edition of April 24th. So next week's Twinsburg Bulletin will have this wonderful newsletter as an insert, and I hope you enjoy reading all the great news about all of our students and staff and programs. So enough about me talking, right, guys? It's time to celebrate some Wilcox Tigers. So if we can please ask Ms. Villa and Mr. Asti to come forward and celebrate some great Wilcox students that make Wilcox rock. Good evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Powers. Tonight, we're here to recognize some of our awesome students and staff members that make Wilcox rock. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Asti. Boys and girls, he's going to call you up. We're going to do some handshaking. I'll help you with that. And then we're going to line up here for some really cool pictures.
Thank you, Ms. Philip. Good evening, Board of Education, Mrs. Powers, community. Like Ms. Villa said, we're going to celebrate some great students and their accomplishments today. So when I call your name, boys and girls, come up, and I'll call your corresponding teacher, and if they were able to be here, they'll come up as well. So first up, we have Lucas Bradyk in Mrs. Kane's class. Come on up, Lucas.[883.75][883.75][applause] Mrs. Kane has nominated Lucas for the Wilcox Rocks Award because he shows consistent, outstanding character traits. He is always kind to classmates, he offers help when it is needed, and he is a terrific role model. Lucas is always on task and a superb listener. What she likes best about Lucas is that he has grown so much this year by being brave and stepping out of his comfort zone in order to become an amazing student he is. And then the best part, I get to interview the students as well about why their teacher rocks. And Lucas says that Mrs. Kane rocks because she makes Lucas happy, because she is always nice, smiles, is polite, and gives her students pennies.[923.12][923.12][laughter] Not real pennies, though, he said. One time in math, Mrs. Kane helped Lucas solve a problem where there were two math problems stuck together and equal. The students had to draw arrows, and Mrs. Kane taught Lucas how to draw those arrows appropriately. Lucas says, "Thank you for teaching us."[940.12][940.12][applause] Our next student is Reagan Rothbone in Mrs. Frello's class. Come on up, Reagan.[951.12][951.12][applause] Mrs. Frello writes that Reagan is much deserving of the Wilcox Rocks nomination. She is a very enthusiastic learner and comes to school with a smile on her face. She is very empathetic to others and is very caring when she sees students in need. Her work ethic and focus are doing well and inspiration to her classmates, and has earned herself a leadership role in the classroom, where students often seek her out throughout the day for assistance. It is an honor for Mrs. Frello to teach Reagan this year in first grade. And Reagan said that Mrs. Frello rocks because she has prepared Reagan for second grade. She loves doing the fun math lessons of graphing different animals and answering questions about them. Mrs. Frello has helped Reagan with her writing in first, next, then, and last, and how to find her own Knuffle Bunny. Reagan says, "Thank you for teaching me in our class this year."[1005.12][1005.12][applause] Our next student is Gianna Kornav in Mrs. Nysley's class.[1014.00][1014.00][applause] Gianna is responsible and respectful daily in her classroom. She is always asking why questions and loves learning new things. She is helpful to other students, and she is an active participant during all classroom discussions and lessons. Mrs. Nysley is so proud of how much Gianna has grown this year and how hard she works, especially in reading group, where she is a leader. And she said that Mrs. Nysley rocks because she gives her students brag tags and lets them play on the iPads. She teaches her students math and reading. Gianna loves learning about the new shapes and how they have flat surfaces or round surfaces. In the beginning of the year, Gianna struggled with adding, but Mrs. Nysley showed her how to use the number line, and now it's easy, she said. Gianna will miss Mrs. Nysley next year.[1062.58][1062.58][applause] Those are our first graders. We have some kindergartners here. First up, Mason Krasminski in Mrs. Troy's class. Come on up, Mason.[1075.41][1075.41][applause] Mrs. Troy said that Mason makes Wilcox a special place for everyone he meets. He takes responsibility, helps others, and has a positive attitude throughout every day. Mason puts his best effort into every task and always does it with a smile. Everyone in room 167 knows they can count on Mason to be a fair friend. Mrs. Troy thinks he might be the best mailman she has ever had.[1101.41][1101.41][laughter] Wilcox rocks because of Mason.[1104.58][1104.58][applause] And Mason said that Mrs. Troy rocks because she lets her students do crafts, like when she made, when her students made plate bunnies. She also helped Mason learn about subtraction. Mason is so excited that in his class, they're earning 20 rocks in their bucket, and then they earn a pajama day. Mrs. Troy makes learning fun.[1126.33][1126.33][applause] Our next student is Ryan Jacobus in Ms. Washington's class. Come on up, Ryan.[1136.75][1136.75][applause] Ms. Washington was unable to be here, but said that Ryan is a hard-working student. He comes to school eager to learn. Whenever he is asked to perform a task, he is always willing with a smile. He is a great student and possesses the character traits of being caring, responsible, respectful when interacting with his peers. She said, "You rock, Ryan." And he said that Ms. Washington rocks because she lets us make fun stuff to take home to our mom and dad. His favorite craft was making creepy carrots by adding stickers and colored paper to paper carrots. Ms. Washington also teaches her students fun math about shapes and cylinders, and spheres can roll. Ms. Washington rocks.[1180.08][1180.08][applause] And our final student is Lauren Callaway, and I don't believe I see Lauren. She wasn't able to make it today in Ms. DeCola's class, but I wanted to read about what Ms. DeCola had to say about her anyway. She said, "Lauren's behavior reflects the four characteristics of the Wilcox pledge. She is responsible, respectful, caring, and safe. She is always on task and ready to learn. She works very hard to do her best and is very respectful and uses her manners daily. She is kind and caring to her classmates, and Lauren's behavior makes her a great role model for her peers." And she said that Ms. DeCola rocks because she has her students make Dalmatian bags by taking white bags and adding black polka dots to them. In math class, Ms. DeCola taught her math class how to take two numbers and find out how they are equal. Ms. DeCola rocks, and Lauren will miss her next year.[1231.58][1231.58][applause] So if I could have all my students and teachers hold up their certificates in front of them, just in front of their tummies and chest, hold it up nice and smile at it. This is a great photo opportunity for mom and dad. Boys and girls, thank you so much for coming up here, and we're so proud of you, Wilcox. Just every one of you makes Wilcox rock. So thank you, guys.[1265.41][1265.41][applause] And go ahead and sit tight, because I know we're going to recognize some more great students from Dodge. Come on up.
First, I'd like to kind of thank Mrs. Powers for going through the celebration of Courtney's life. One of the things that we did district-wide was do a Colors for Courtney event, and I just wanted to publicly say, on behalf of our staff, the outreach that came from our community and from our students and from our staff was tremendous. And so yesterday's Colors for Courtney event was a tremendous activity. So if you get a chance to check out the various Twitter feeds, you'll see some of the photos. But really, what it is, is a testament to our community and a testament to our staff and our students of how we embrace each other in a time of tragedy. So again, thank you from the Dodge staff and on behalf of the other school buildings as well, Wilcox and the high school and RBC and Bissel. Again, just a tremendous event. One of the things that we've done since we, again, changing gears since we've seen you the last time, was our Spring Fling. Our numbers for Spring Fling were larger than we've ever had, and so our students really had an opportunity to show their talents. And so you'll be able to have an opportunity to see some of those things up in the building still as we close out the year, if you're visiting Dodge. But also, again, feel free to visit our website, because a lot of those things are up there as well. One of the most exciting things for me, though personally, is that following our Spring Fling is our chance to invite our third-grade families up. So we had a tremendous turnout for our Learn About Dodge night, and that was the night where our third-grade families from Bissel get to come over and meet and learn a little bit about Dodge. And for me, the most encouraging and uplifting part of it was that I got to shake hands with every third grader that came. And so if you guys see me, I made them a promise, which is that I was going to go down to Bissel and meet their teachers and see their class and try to remember the one thing that they told me that was unique about them. So we're really excited about bringing our newest Dodge Tigers over from Bissel at the end of the school year. Today, we're going to start by honoring some teachers, and then we have a very special presentation of some talented students that we'd like to talk to you about. So we're going to start off by honoring some teachers.
Good evening, everyone. One of the great things about Dodge is the teachers and the staff that dedicate so much time to our children and to our families. So we'd like to take a few minutes tonight to honor some of those great people that have been nominated by their colleagues. And when we call your name, if you will please come up here for your award and stand up here, just like the students receive their Student of the Month award. So the first one is Kathy Custage. Kathy is an instructional specialist at Dodge.[1451.83][1451.83][applause] And she was nominated by Kelly Roberson, our school psychologist. Says Kathy is always the first to volunteer to attend meetings when an instructional specialist is needed. She always seems to sacrifice herself, show willingness for the sake of the team. She is an example for many, and we appreciate her contributions to the Dodge team. So congratulations, Kathy.[1478.58][1478.58][applause]
The second teacher we'd like to honor tonight is Mr. John Park. And I am going to read...[1488.58][1488.58][applause] So Mr. Park was nominated by Deb Pelka. Mr. Park is always willing to share his ideas and expertise. He developed math lessons to meet the needs of all of his students, and he's a talented... Can you shake his hand too as he comes through? He is talented in making difficult lessons fun for his students. Now Deb is a co-teacher that goes into Mr. Park's classroom, and so I've had the opportunity to talk to Deb a little bit about it, and I think that she is really enamored about how skillfully he's able to move the difficult concepts for the students as they kind of move through. And what I've personally learned about John is that he's a thinker. And so I know that he makes to make sure he goes through things and make sure he's checking to make sure that all the pros and cons, and when he makes a decision about things, there seem to be really quality decisions, so I appreciate him for that.
The next staff member we'd like to honor is Janine Stupka. Mrs. Stupka is always kind and patient with the students. She is new to our team this year, and she stepped in without any hesitation. We are very happy to have her enthusiastic and awesome work ethic. So thank you, Janine.[1570.15][1570.15][applause]
The next staff member that we are recognizing is Mr. Don Schultz.[1578.21][1578.21][applause] Don was recognized by Jim McHugh, and first and foremost, John is our fifth-grade team Don works very, extremely hard every year to plan our Great Greenfield trip. His dedication and leaderships make the trip successful for everyone. Dodge receives many compliments every year, not only from the Henry Ford Village, but from the museum as well as the hotel staff. They are continuously complimenting him on his organization and how well he organizes the students. And what I will say about Don is that the Greenfield trip is a huge undertaking, and this is absolutely true what Mrs. McHugh said, is that when we leave the Greenfield museums and the hotel, they consistently tell us that our students outshine every other group that comes. And that is a testament to Don's organization and his passion for the trip to make sure that students have a great experience, and we really appreciate that from Don.[1643.58][1643.58][applause]
And finally, tonight, we'd like to honor Kim MacArthur. Mrs. MacArthur always seems, and she was unable to be here tonight, I'm sorry. Mrs. MacArthur always seems to have a pleasant and willing attitude. She serves as a general education rep in many special education meetings at the last minute. She is a daily encouragement, and she is so appreciated by the staff, appreciated by the staff. And this was nominated by Kelly Roberson, again, our school psychologist. So congratulations to Kim MacArthur.[1678.15][1678.15][applause]
And our final staff member, who also was not able to make it tonight, was Christine Palmer. Christine is a fourth-grade teacher, and she was nominated by Jim McHugh. Christine volunteers on a Women's History Month committee, which was tremendous this school year. She also is the fourth-grade ELL PLC leader, which means she takes a leadership role in designing our lessons and activities for PLC. Christine does a great job with a poetry activity she calls Coffee House, and it's a really extremely nice activity for their students. And I'm just simply going to say, and someone remind me to tell Chris this tomorrow, whenever I see Chris, she makes me smile. She has a great personality, and she really makes sure that that personality is carried over to her fourth graders. And I'm sure you're going to see one of her fourth graders, who is a tremendous golfer she was sharing with me, up here very soon, because he's got some accomplishments coming as well. So congratulations to all of our staff, and thank you for everything that you do for
Thank you, staff. And along with the wonderful staff, we have the best students. Mrs. Powers mentioned Saturday, and it's taken me about a week, Mrs. Powers, to be able to mention her name, and I don't know if I can. But I know one of the things that the pastor that delivered the funeral said to all of the students that were there is if we want to remember Courtney and we want to honor her, we continue to work, we continue to strive, and we continue to be great Tigers. So I am so happy to introduce you to some great Tigers today. So if... So if Haley Taylor-Marter, Hayley Diibblis, Carolyn Kramer, Jessica Gay, Maya Pereira, Jordan Milliken, Alice Johnson, London Pride, and Joshua Whirl can come to the stage for me. And you know what, students? Why don't you come up front so that you can all fit? This year, students at Dodge in the sixth grade were given the opportunity to participate in Invention League. For some of you who's been here in Twinsburg for a while, you may remember it as Invention Convention. But Invention League is an organization that encourages students to use their mind, problem-solving skills, and abilities to solve some problems. Our students began this year in November with our Invention League kickoff assembly in November again, and students were introduced to what they can do and the excitement of it, and then from there, we had over 70 students sign up, 70, willing to test their problem-solving skills and their invention skills. Once those students signed up, they were all given an opportunity to think about some problems, problems in the neighborhood, problems at home, problems at school. They were then asked to take those problems, narrow them down to the one that really mattered to them, and then develop something to solve those problems. So off we go with 70 students doing just that task. I had an opportunity to meet with them from that November kickoff all the way to February. As they worked, they met at each other's houses, they worked, they asked questions, they worked, they probably found at me a couple of times because I made them go back and work some more, but February 23rd, they were able to present their inventions. I was very fortunate, and we were very fortunate to have outside community members come in and judge, because I said, "I can't do it this year." It is very hard to pick which kids you want, and they're all your kids, so I didn't take that responsibility on, but we were very fortunate to have anyone from engineers to accountants come in to give their feedback to students. From that process, we were able to choose six students based on a rubric that these judges had. Students had to do things like making sure that their invention was marketable, making sure that their question or their problem was answered through their invention. And one of the most important features that students had to demonstrate is the process and was the process. It wasn't the final product, it wasn't how it looked, but what did you learn? What mistakes did you make along the way that helped you grow? So tonight, I have the six represented, or the six inventions that will represent Dodge Intermediate School at the state competition on July 29th at the Ohio State Fair. So I'm very proud of these students. I'll let you clap, absolutely. Now, this is what they have in store for them. The process is important, so you're going to see some of them, some of them brought their prototypes. These are workings. They're never done, they're never complete, because again, the goal is the process. How are you changing it? How are you using your research to make those types of decisions? Once they compete on January, July 29th at the Ohio State Fair, the judges there will choose someone in our group, or one of our inventors in our group, to represent our building at the national competition in Washington, DC. So we won't find that out until later. These students did a phenomenal job, and I know we're going to have a great representative to represent Dodge. Now, without further ado, I'm going to introduce them. Haley and Taylor, you're going to take the floor here.
Hello, my name is Haley Diibblis.
And my name is Taylor Marty.
We made an invention called the Tally Feeder. And this is it, well, it's not done, but we made it because her parents are at work, she goes to school, and we bought a house, but my family goes by the house sometimes, and without me there, we didn't have a feed, that's all the time. So we made this thing. We don't know our processes, but it's easy to say to just come up with an idea and be able to do it, but you don't actually try to do it. It's just hard to see.
I understand. You want to give the mic to Carolyn and Jessica?
Hello, my name is Carolyn Kramer, and my partner's name is Jessica Gay. She couldn't be here tonight. We invented the Tanglebuster. The Tanglebuster solved our problem of on-the-go hair brushing. Also, the Tanglebuster beats having to carry around a brush and hairspray. The Tanglebuster helped solve our problem because it is a lightweight, small, portable brush with a mirror and a container for detangler or hairspray. Also, the invention is collapsible, and my partner and I learned that trial and error is important for big ideas and that hard work pays off in the end.
Hi, I'm Jordan.
And I'm Maya. And our invention is the Fizbomb.
Our invention solved how your bathtub is dirty and sometimes it's not always easy to scrub it. It takes a long time.
Our invention solves the problem by giving you a fast, easy, and effective way to clean your bathtub.
Through this, we learned that what you do pays off in the end and that you have to -- we learn to persevere through whatever you do and not to give up in the middle of it, because at the end, you'll earn what your hard work paid off for.
My problem was, so when parents bathe babies, they have to like bend down, use one arm to support the baby in the bath, and some people get cramps in their back, and they only have one hand to clean the baby and play with it. But I, my invention solves that. It is the, yeah, it's the lifeguard baby or the lifeguard doll. It supports baby in the baths, and with its suction cups, it holds, it supports it in the bathtub, but so you can just strap the baby in, not like I'll arm it, there is a easier way to do it, but this is like a soap applicator, and you can, the baby can squeeze it out with motor skills, and it can also, it's made out of like a towel feeling, so it can also help wash baby and cleaning baby's head and places, so to keep the water out of its eyes. And it's a soap applicator, but it is not a replacement for parents. There should always be somebody in the room.
Hi, my name is London Helen Pride. My invention is the Faith House. I wasn't able to bring it today, but I made this for my sister, Laurel, who passed away, and she had a disability, and I solved this problem, because when I was playing with my doll, she couldn't play with it because it had wood, and she didn't want to like scratch on it, wouldn't want to have scratches. And my, so I made a Faith House, and it's basically what you have, it's a house, but it's made with, for people with disabilities, and it gives you a learning experience, and I feel like it can help anybody who has a disability. And I learned through this process that you can do anything if you put your mind through it and you process it through your head, you go back and forth, what should I do? And it gets a little confusing on the way, but it all comes together.
Hello, my name is Joshua Whirl, and my invention is PASS, or Pupil Arm Support System. I wanted to solve the problem where students' arms became tired. This problem makes my hands tired and reduces my neatness. My invention solved this problem by allowing the student to rest his or her arm on PASS and writing at the same time. In the process of making PASS, I learned that there are problems everywhere waiting to be solved. Most of these problems are small, like the one I solved with PASS. I enjoyed working with PASS, and I hope students will be grateful in the near future for my invention, for this invention.
So as you can see, our students had a lot of problems to solve, and they did a fantastic job of solving them. You only got a little scratch of the surface of what they put in, the effort, the time, the research, and the work they put in this. I am extremely proud of you. So thank you so much for letting me share them with you tonight.
Just really quickly, if I could just also have you give a round of applause for Mrs. Huggins, who worked very closely with all of our students to make sure that this was a success. This was a project of ours, and the students did a fantastic job. And with that, I'd also like for the parents of our finalists to stand, to be recognized also. Part of that commitment for the Invention League, though, is a lot of hard work at home, and we recognize the fact that our parents support their dreams and support their creativity through that, and so we want to just make sure to recognize all those things as well. At this time, I'd like to invite the high school up, Mrs. Torango, to celebrate some of the activities at the high school.
If I can have Mr. Sullen up here with us? Okay? Oh, thank you. Tonight, we'd like to introduce some special students who have won awards outside of our high school. As you know, some of our students do compete in contests and other opportunities to receive either scholarship money or awards, sometimes unrelated to our school, that we find out either by a community member or a local organization that said, "Hey, congratulations, one of your students won." So tonight, we'd like to feature some of those students. The first is, and a couple of them couldn't make it tonight, and I'll explain why. So the first one is Krishna Patel, and Krishna was the winner of our Twinsburg Rotary Speech Contest. Her speech was titled "Opioids: The Pinnacle of Addiction." She is unable to be here tonight, as she is interviewing with university hospitals tonight for a summer volunteer opportunity, and she does want to go into something with medicine, so this opportunity tonight for her, we're rooting for her. But with this speech, it really did help her understand opioids and the havoc they're wreaking on society right now. The Rotary also agreed and awarded her $100. So we wanted to thank our local Rotary group for doing that, and we wish Krishna good luck tonight as she interviews with UH. Our next student is Shreya Kusumanchi, and she is a ninth grader and winner of the American Association of Teachers of French. And she is actually awarded an opportunity for getting actually $100. And this organization, we have a little video about her, since she couldn't make it this evening, she's actually at the museum with her peers, and they're doing a project for the AP European History course. So tonight, while she's there, we actually have her on video, so.
Students and staff, did you know we have a nationally recognized writer here at the school? This writer is sophomore Shreya Kusumanchi. Shreya participated in a national creative writing competition for the American Association of Teachers of French. This writing competition takes place twice a year, both in April and September. The winners of this award also have their work published in an electronic national French magazine, The Élone. They receive a certificate and a check for $50. Hundreds and perhaps thousands of students participate across the United States, but only three competed here at THS. Madame Hannah, the French teacher in Twinsburg, explains that Shreya is an awesome student who participates in class and is always looking for extra work. She is immensely proud of Shreya for participating in the event. Madame Hannah points out that she has never had a student win the award in her entire teaching career. When Shreya heard that she won, she was surprised and elated.
I was really happy and totally surprised, like I was so happy, and I told my family and my friends, and they were all like congratulating me, and my teacher also congratulating me. I was really surprised and just ecstatic.
The prompt for the writing competition was, "You are not going to believe me when I tell you that I had something happen to me, did something, but it's true, and I can prove it to you." Shreya's story has an interesting twist.
So this story is about, I have to prove a point, and I said that I was invisible, and I used my imagination to tell why I was invisible and how it came to be, and all about that.
She discloses that this award shows that all the hard work and learning in the French class is finally paying off. The prize of national recognition, a certificate, and a check for $50 is a clear indication of that.
If you see Shreya in the halls, be sure to congratulate her on her win. Reporting from the newsroom, I'm Andrew Young with THS News.
Mr. Courtney's students created that video, so we want to do a shout out to Mr. Courtney's students. And also, what happened was, originally, the $50 came through, and then another $50 came through to Mrs. Hannah that said, "This is the additional money that we owe her." So she actually got $100. So we want to thank her, and come on up, Ms. Hannah. Thank you for bringing that out, and Shreya, and that competition. Our next student, Haley Nudelman. Haley, come on up, our 12th grader is here this evening. Haley, this is interesting about Haley, come on over here. So I get this email, and it says, "Congratulations, Mrs. Torango, as principal of Haley Nudelman. She will be representing Twinsburg High School. She made it into a finalist of the top 10 in Northeast Ohio of the Stop the Hate Speech, and she is up for awards and prizes at the Malts Museum on April 29th, when you're going to do your speech in front of a panel, apparently, of close to $40,000." So the money will be awarded that day. I believe the competition is between 4:00 and 6:00 PM, and they invited principals and a guidance counselor, so we'll be there rooting her on. But I just kind of want to ask you, without divulging too much, because I don't want you, you know, jeopardizing your chance to get some big cash, what prompted you to participate in the Stop the Hate Speech contest?
Okay, well, originally--
Who can tell us?
Okay, so originally, I mean, it was a lot of money, so, I mean, yeah, I mean, I need money to go to college next year. But when I saw it was a prompt, that like something that I felt close about, and that it's something that I've been working towards.
Are you allowed to tell us?
Well, I mean, it's Stop the Hate, it's, the whole prompt is just Stop the Hate, and you just, pretty much, you talk about, like you have to have a personal story, and then you talk about how you worked towards stopping that hate. So I talked about how I experienced antisemitism, like an extreme instance, and how I worked towards stopping that, and, but there's like different things people can do.
So I guess I'll ask you this, then. How did you find out you were a finalist? Was it through an email? Was it a phone call? How do you know you're one of the top people?
So I was actually in Washington, DC, and I like just got to the hotel for this volunteer opportunity that I had, and right when I got into the hotel, I got this call, and I didn't answer it because I didn't know the number, and then I got, I like listened to the voicemail, and all of a sudden, like my roommates are looking at me like I'm crazy because I'm jumping up and down and like running around, and I'm going crazy because, but I found out over a voicemail, so.
It's okay, that's great. We are so proud of her, and we are excited to have her represent Twinsburg High School. We have won a similar award in the past, and they did give us a nice banner for our building, so we hope to showcase that and hopefully wish her luck, Haley, at the end of April. so we hope to showcase that and hopefully wish her luck Haley at the end of April. And I see your mom out there. Did you bring anyone else with you?
My brother and my dad.
There, there. Congratulations and we wish you well, okay? Our last students tonight to be showcased for an award or a competition, Kayla Eber and Emily Agnello. Okay. Theirs is interesting, we're going to have them, they have some little visuals here. So, all right, come on up. All right, so we have Kayla and Emily. All right, tell a little bit about, I'm going to explain what happened. So, I, again, going through emails, I get an email, "Congratulations, Mrs. Torrango, guess what? Two of your 12th graders won an award at the state of Ohio, you came in first, first place. They created a book." A book and the competition was the state pre-K children's literature competition. It was through CVCC, but it was the Educators State Rising Conference and you need to explain what the pickle power challenge is because I have no clue. But we wanted to showcase the two young ladies and maybe have them describe their book a little bit about how, what they won and how that went, okay? Go ahead.
So, I'm Kayla and as she stated, we're both seniors at Cuyahoga Valley Career Center and we're in the Teaching Professions class. So, through this class, we got to compete in the Educators Rising Conference and we were looking through different competitions we could compete in. We saw the book competition, we were like, "Let's create a book." So, we're like, "Well, what are we going to do it on?" We walk in, took our class on the first day and our teacher has pickles all over the room. We're like, "What is going on? Like what are these for?" She explains that there's like this concept called pickle power that she created at Cuyahoga Valley Career Center. And it's basically about like being civil to others and being, like being kind, random acts of kindness, because some people like this day and age like are lacking that, like hold doors open for people, like common decency. So, we're like, that's like a really great message to share to like preschoolers and just show, showcase that in our book. So, this is our book, it's called Dill Pickle Goes to School and it is a colored book and it's also bilingual, so we do have it in Spanish as well, as you can see. And we basically just came up with the concept because, like she said, like some people are lacking it and we thought it would be great for students to be able to learn that. But we also wanted it to be very interactive since kindergartners and preschoolers are always really interactive. And then in the back of the book, we had a pocket, but we don't have it on this copy, and it included a card that had the pickle power information, a card, a card that said, "I like because," and it's basically a way of saying, "I like somebody and this is why I like," to give them recognition. And then we had little papers, like notepads of pickle power that had the pickle power on it. And it was really interesting because we go to the competition and we have a pickle cut out, we have a pickle poster board, we're wearing a pickle shirt, so everyone's staring at us, like wondering what the pickles are for. So, that makes us a little more nervous because everyone's watching, but one of the, because how it works is the book goes to someone, they read it and then they return it and then we read it to someone else. So, I saw the judge walk by with our book in her hand, so I go, "Kayla, like that's our book." She's holding our book and I hear, like I'm listening and then they're talking about how cute it is and how we would love to hear something. And so, the judge comes back over and hands us our book and goes, "I love this book, I want it in my classroom, give me a copy." And so, that just made us so excited and so when we went in to compete, it made it so much easier because we were like, "Okay, they loved it." And so, when we read it, they said that it was like a really good idea, we really loved the pickles and that we did really well. So, it was really exciting and we're so excited to go to Florida for Nationals.
Thank you, ladies. So, they did bring a sample for our board members of the dill pickle, the five right there. I would love one too. So, as you know, seeing the Wilcox students up here earlier, it all starts with the younger grades to get them to this level and we want to thank these two young ladies. You are truly a gem for Twinsburg High School and for Cuyahoga Valley Career Center and we wish you well as you head to that sunny state, hopefully you will get some sun and here up in Twinsburg. But we thank you, we appreciate this so much. Please thank your teacher at CVCC, she's so proud of you and we're just glad to be a part of this. Let us know, keep us posted how you do, okay? All right, congratulations. Dill Pickle Goes to School, okay. Thank you, ladies, okay. So, we're almost finished. Our building highlight tonight, I don't know, I don't know how we could top all of these things this evening, but we have three juniors here tonight, so if I can have, oh, two, okay. All right, so David didn't make it, but I guess the first thing we'll do is let's show the video. So, Mr. Sullen, take us through our building highlight this evening.
Good evening, everyone. Our building highlight for this evening is at Twinsburg High School, all of our juniors and it actually started last year. We've been doing CPR training through UH. So, Ohio Revised Code, beginning with this current group of seniors, essentially Ohio Revised Code states that we have to, because we are a district that holds, that houses grades nine through 12, we must teach CPR to the high schoolers at some point. And so, that's what we've been doing at the high school. The way we broke it up and the way we organized it is, we also have end of course exams going on right now. And so, on April 9th and April 16th, only our ninth and 10th grade students were testing. So, at that point, everyone else has a delayed start except for our juniors who are scheduled for CPR. So, on April 9th, we had juniors with the last name A through G. The 16th, it was juniors with the last name H through P and then on the 23rd, we'll have juniors with the last name P through Z in. So, training took place in the commons at the high school. We're getting one-third, one-third, and one-third of our juniors in, so slightly over 100 kids per session. And this was done while the ninth and 10th graders were testing in the pods, the commons are far enough from the pods that it's not disruptive to the testing environment. During the testing, what was really nice is that every student had their own mannequin, so they didn't have to share with anyone. UH provided enough mannequins for us and for the students to have opportunity to work on their mannequins, as well as a set of the, not just the full-size adult mannequins, but they also had child mannequins also. So, that was very interesting and I think the students really enjoyed that. So, once again, Ohio Revised Code stated that CPR must be conducted by a certified trainer, so we do want to give a special thanks to university hospitals. Their trainers were excellent, they did excellent with our students and I think they enjoyed our students just as much as our students enjoyed them. And they actually had some well wishes for our students and just general comments. The letter that they wrote to us, it says, "The students of Twinsburg have been truly a pleasure during CPR training. They are engaged, attentive, professional, and kind. Our staff has been very impressed by the students and the Twinsburg staff. We had, we had several students help unpack and move mannequins without us even asking. The staff members are also a pleasure. They are helpful and courteous and it was obvious that they are highly respected by the students. During the training, every student was looking forward and paying attention. They followed the instructions of the UH trainers. What really surprised us was we never had to repeat ourselves. The students followed directions and were very respectful. We also have not seen anyone using their cell phones during this training. I can speak, I can speak for all of our team when I say the students of Twinsburg are what we hope to see at every school. I do want to thank you for all your help organizing these trainings. It is a valuable life-saving skill that's been used several times in the community already. It's very nice to see this taken so seriously from the staff and student body from university hospitals."
We're going to get Manny. Manny's over here, okay? So, real quick, Manny is here with Matt Diamon. Bring Manny over here. So, Matt Diamon's here as well as James Kanizel. Okay. So, without actually showing everyone here the process and just maybe some things that you learned, something different or unique, okay? We call Manny, I remember my name, it was resuscitation, Anne. All right, here we go. Ready, Mr. Diamon? Tell me a little bit about it, tell this audience, was there anything unique or anything different that you learned or something? I'll ask you actually two questions, anything unique or different that can, comes to mind?
Do I have to use the microphone?
Sure, I can.
Okay. I think what was, excuse me, especially unique was learning that you can't just jump right in and perform CPR on someone that you see that's in need. I learned, we learned that you have to ask if you are choking first. That's an important step, especially for safety and just, you know, when you do your compressions, you have to push pretty hard, so if you go right into the procedure, you could injure someone. It's, it's a safety precaution and it's very valuable.
Great. James, did you, how about you?
Anything special or unique?
I found it interesting that you actually, I hadn't realized that one of the important parts of the CPR thing was that you have to check your surroundings to make sure that you're safe before you start it and that was, that was interesting.
Awesome, thank you. Okay. The child aspect, because I know they talked about that. Anything different about that?
Yeah, so for adults, you would use your full hand and, you would use your hand like this and then make a fist shoulder like this and then push down hard about two inches in to the chest. But for children, you can't do that because they're smaller and they weigh less. So, especially for infants in particular, you just use two to three fingers and push about an inch and a half into their chest.
So, I'm going to ask you like a million dollar question. If you were, say, at the airport and you're at the Chick-fil-A at the airport, because I was just there and there was Chick-fil-A, and the video showed someone at a fruit counter and they went down and the gentleman's going, "Are you okay? Are you okay?" Do you feel that with this training, and eventually you're going to get your certificate, do you feel confident enough that you could perform something if you were in a situation like that and you saw something happen like that?
Absolutely.
Really? Okay, great. How about you, Jim?
I do.
Awesome. I think they are like, we use the word testimonial, they are a testimonial and a testament to that, yes, these trainings work. We are so thankful to UH, $28 value per student to get a certificate and that is through our contract with university hospitals and they did this for us, no cost to the parents and no additional cost to us. So, we want to thank UH, University Hospitals, but also to our students for taking this so seriously, to be confident enough to say that, because I know in certain times of panic and crisis, you, sometimes you don't know what to do and to feel confident like that, thank you to Matt and James. Awesome, and thank you to our Manny. And also for, and thanks for providing this, because I know this is a tough thing, especially as a parent, to really go through life and say, "What if this ever happened to my kid? Would someone know if I was not with them? Would someone know how to do this?" And our juniors right now, all of them by next week will all be trained, so we thank university hospitals.
Mrs. Torrango and our Twinsburg High School students, you continue to amaze me at all the great things that you are accomplishing here within your four years at the, at the high school level, so thank you very much. And Board of Education, you know, as Mrs. Torrango said, that training, thanks to university hospital, is free for our juniors and that will continue into the future. All members of our staff now are CPR and AED trained and they are also tremendous partners in our academy at Twinsburg High School. So, university hospital is a tremendous partner with the Twinsburg City School District and we continue to be very grateful for all that they're doing to make sure our students are safe while they're here at a school and everywhere else as well as our staff. So, that concludes my report for this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Powers. Moving on to committee reports. This is a good time if, appreciate you staying, if you'd like to stay for the rest of the meeting, you are more than welcome to, but you know that you got homework and dinner and things to get to, so thank you again. Moving on to committee reports?
Yeah, so I have a couple of things, you know, I'll report out on the curriculum committee right after this, but typically during this time, I use this as an opportunity to present on matters relative to the Cuyahoga Valley Career Center. And we happen to have our superintendent, the superintendent of the Cuyahoga Valley Career Center in attendance with us this evening, Mr. Dave Mangus is present. And so, without me having to do an update, we have the superintendent here, so I invite him up to the podium just to introduce himself and maybe say a couple of words.
It was refreshing to be here today. We work with 11th and 12th graders, as you know, and we kind of got in the adult world of workforce development and training and to see the elementary students in the middle grades doing such great things, that's, that's why we need to be out here and that's why one of our charges, we have three, is to make sure we're communicating effectively and efficiently. So, being here is one of those ways of doing that, getting around and seeing how other board meetings are run, but also getting some familiarity with the communities that we serve. So, know that that is one of our charges. The other two is quality programming and you heard from Kayla and Emily today, we're very proud of them, competing at that state level and taking first place, qualifying for Nationals. And at the Skills USA Regional Competition, we just had two Twinsburg students that qualified for state competition by placing second and they'll be in Columbus on April 24th and 25th. So, we look at those student programs and the quality instruction, it's really about making sure that they have some work-based learning opportunities, that they're earning credentials, they're earning college credit. And the last part of that is those student organizations, we want them to learn leadership in some, some competitive skills, you know, when you get out there in the real world, you got to, you got to show your edge, so we want to make sure of that. And then the last thing is program expansion, making sure we're putting the quality product out there. So, next year, we are launching our Exercise Science Sports Medicine Program for 11th graders and that's one of the ways that we want to continue to communicate and make sure we're all on the same page. It was very interesting to hear about the Stop the Hate idea and the things that we do in education that's more, it's less about the academics and it's more about the student as a whole and we try to be responsive and communicate those as well. Mark and I worked on the legislative side in Columbus recently and we want you to know the Career Center understands a lot of the challenges that are faced by the partner districts and we're on your side with those as well. So, we put in some language just recently on House Bill 512 that mirrored kind of your language, but for the most part, we recognize the Career Center that it's all about opportunities and options for students. So, banned are, you know, all the options that students prosper in here in Twinsburg, were one of those options as well. So, if they're really into career training, please keep sending them our way and we'll keep knocking it out of the park. So, thank you for the time and it's great to see you and get to know you. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Also, the Curriculum Technology Committee met April 9th at 6 o'clock at RB Chamberlain. Excuse me. And there was a, an update provided on Project Lead the Way, an introduction to engineering design update by teacher John Coltriss. And he also had two, two students also provided information with respect to their participation in the program. So, a recap of what was hap, of what was presented were engineering, the Engineering Principles Class, which was two sections, 51 students total, 42 boys and nine girls. And it was reported that they'd like to see an increase in the female participation portion of it. With Engineering Principles Class, they learned about a design process, applying math, science, and engineering standards to hands-on projects, solving problems using 3D modeling software and they also used an engineering notebook to document their work. The two students were Angela Benzinger and Shantanu Banerjee, who, Angela presented a puzzle cube project and the goal was to build a box using a specified number of puzzle pieces and they used CAD, CAD model, worked with the Inventor Program and talked about her engineers notebook. She passed around a 3D wood model of her cube project and Shantanu presented his toy train project and the goal was to solve how to build a train, created and exploded assembly with parts, with parts listed and created 3D views, multi-detail and section view, created and created a train redesign. So, that was great and the future goals of the program are to add three And the future goals of the program are to add 3D foundation courses, Principles of Engineering, Digital Electronics, and Capstone Projects. So we're looking forward to what's going on in those programs. They also adopted a summer reading program for 2018, and there are a couple of changes with respect to the ninth grade allowing a choice of speak or sleeping freshman never, never lie. And in the 11th grade, they're changing their reading selection to Animal Farm. It's one of my favorite books. It's awesome. So the community voted unanimously for the adoption of the summer reading for 2018. And then there were adoption of Business Communications Course of Study for the high school. Excuse me. And also adoption of Business Communication, Polishing Your Professional Presence, Third Edition. So those are the two texts, texts that were adopted. There was also Norm Potter presented on an update with respect to the academy, and basically for none of the things, were the five-year goals that were exceeded. So there were 70 students that participated in the academy and the goal was 20. 55 partners, we had a goal of five partners. 120-plus Twinsburg High School students enrolled in the intro to business class, and it was no cost to the district except for $39 for postage costs. So looking ahead for year two, speakers from Melt, WKYC, Nestle, Twinsburg Public Library, and more, medical talks on topics, and some of these are pretty interesting, dermatology, orthopedic surgery, summer camps, manufacturing camps, IT camps, and various volunteer opportunities as well. So there's a future possibility for an IT program offered by the University of Cincinnati that they're looking at, and the program offers IT courses to high school students that can be completed through College Credit Plus or AP. And that pretty much sums up my committee report for the Curriculum Committee. Is there anything that I might add that maybe I missed, Angela?
No, you've got it covered.
Okay. So that completes my report for the committee, the Curriculum Committee.
Any other committees' reports?
Not this time.
Moving on, I don't know if Superintendent received any blue cards for remuneration?
I did not.
Alrighty. We'll be on to item G. I will actually be splitting and reading items G1 and 2 separately, Superintendent, and then we'll read G3. It's your first test? Yes. Item G1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a certificated licensed personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Item G2, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts classified personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Motion to accept items G1 and 2 as read.
So moved.
Mrs. Davis first, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Felber, second. Any discussion? Mrs. Powers, please call and roll.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Slura?
Yes. Items G1 and 2 pass 5-0. Item G3, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the supplemental contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. The motion to accept item G3.
So moved.
Mr. Curtis, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Felber, any discussion? Mrs. Powers, please call and roll.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
I've seen.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Mr. Slura?
Yes. Item G3 passes 4-0 with one abstention. Without objection from my colleagues, I will read items H1 through 4. H1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following revised job descriptions as per the attached exhibit, assistant head coach, head coach, volunteer coach, hallway monitor, high school, local professional development committee. Item H2, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a donation from the Twinsburg Athletic Boosters, 10084 Ravenna Road, Twinsburg, Ohio, 44087, totaling $7,500 to purchase athletic equipment for the 2018 fall sports season, per the attached exhibit. Item H3, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education adopts the summer reading requirements for the summer of 2018. The adoption was approved by the District Curriculum Technology Committee on April 9th, 2018, per the attached exhibit. Item H4, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approved the adoption of the Business Communications Course of Study at Twinsburg High School. The adoption was approved by the District Curriculum Technology Committee on April 9th, 2018, as sent to the board under separate cover. Motion for items H1 through 4.
So moved.
Mr. Felber, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Curtis, second. Just want to, as always, so grateful for donations and especially our booster organizations, all of them go above and beyond to help provide some, some great opportunities for our students, and no doubt that this large donation from TAB will benefit the kids. Very, very pleased with this, and I think, I think it's something that will be put to very big use. I know, I've spoken to a few TAB members, and I know some people in the athletic department as well are very happy with this, and looking forward to seeing how the students benefit from this. So thank you very much to TAB.
Can I echo Mr. Slura's comments? I'm sure the athletes, the coaches, and everybody involved, they're just going to be very appreciative of this, and it's just a great organization, and thanks, thanks to the TAB.
Mrs. Powers, please call and roll.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Mr. Slura?
Yes. Item H5, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education adopt and purchase Business Communication, Polishing Your Professional Presence, Third Edition textbook, copyright 2016, for the Business Communications Course offered at Twinsburg High School, had a cost of $5,276.71. The adoption was approved by the District Curriculum Technology Committee on April 9th, 2018. This is a permanent improvement expenditure. Have a motion to accept item G or H5.
So moved.
Mr. Curtis, do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Davis, discussion? Mrs. Powers, please call and roll.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Slura?
Yes. Moving on to Agenda Item I, miscellaneous.
I just want to say it was really great to see everybody who showed up at the pancake breakfast, and it was, it was a great event, and it was a lot of fun being with the teachers and staff and administrators serving up pancakes and, and just getting involved in that way. That's always a, I enjoy doing things like that, and it was really great seeing the crowd that showed up, and people had come from after the race, I guess, hungry from running, and it was just, it was good to see the families and the kids at, at there. And not related to that, good luck to all the kids who are going to be doing their state tests, and they're going to do great. They just need to remember and relax, and they'll get through this, and it's, and just good luck to the teachers and students.
Also, good luck to all the students that were here getting awards and for the contests that they're doing. Haley Nudal, and especially participated in the gamble program, which was a Toastmasters program that ran for a number of years, first at the middle school, then the high school. So she asked me to, to work with her on her speech, and I really didn't have much to change. It was, she can't change any words, but the, the inflection and the delivery is very good, and that's top 10 out of 3,000 entries. And the rest of the students that are going to other, other competitions, it's, it's good to see. The schools are winning awards, the students are winning awards. So it's a great time right now. Yeah, I want to echo the Blue Ribbon Committee putting on a great event for the, for the pancake breakfast. I happened to, I had an opportunity to, you know, participate in it last year for our new money levy, and so last year I was out front, you know, kind of wandering around and just greeting people and, you know, picking up trays and things like that, and this time I actually had to spend, got a chance to spend some time back in the kitchen where it's, it's hot. But a lot of the work that happens, and so I, I got, you know, I always appreciate our staff, as well as the food service staff, and kind of the things they do and how effective and efficient they are. But you really do get a sense, once you're back there, when people are coming through the line and food is being cooked, and you have staff that are coming around and checking the temperature of the food, making sure that we're in compliance with all of the expectations. Mr. Bendis came back as well and rolled up his sleeves, checking on things, making sure that everything was replenished, we had supplies, and we had food to constantly serve. And so hats off to our staff for making us look good and making it look easy, because it is not. I had, I enjoyed myself. It was, it's for a good cause, obviously, but I don't mind getting my hands dirty as well and doing what's necessary to make sure that we keep things moving in a positive direction and allowing us the opportunity to continue to provide quality services to our students and our staff. So that was a great experience.
Just don't let Mr. Curtis serve the syrup.
Yeah. You know what? I have one mishap. I'm not going to let you get away with that. Yeah, he didn't. Mr. Felber did not. He did not screw that up. I did. But other than that, I did not slow down production. So, you know, wanted to make sure I, I make, make notice of that. The other thing that I wanted to talk about was the board had an opportunity to tour all of our school facilities and go into classrooms, visit classrooms, and in some instances, interact with students and staff, and really get an opportunity from a bird's eye view, or at least up close view, of actually what's happening day to day in our classrooms. And so I was out of town, I actually got delayed on a flight to come back, but I was able to catch up at Wilcox and then move on to a couple of other buildings. And so this is something that I, you know, kind of do in my professional career. It's, it's, you're able to see things through a different lens, instructionally what's going on in the classroom, and watching our teachers do what they do, seeing how engaged our students are, watching how our teachers integrate technology into their instruction. It is not easy to do, but they are professionals, and they did a wonderful job. I saw a lot of great things, a lot of positive things happening. I saw a lot of great student work in the classroom and even outside of the classrooms. I saw how data is being used to drive instruction. All of the stuff that we talk about, I was able to see it, and it was really great to see. And also just a lot of the hard work that goes on in these buildings, not only from an instructional standpoint, but our custodial staff, we saw them up and working, you saw our parent volunteers in the buildings. All of the students, again, were, were engaged, bright-eyed, bushy-tailed. We were a little tired at the end of the day, but they were not. So I just wanted to make sure I acknowledged the Superintendent, her leadership team, for allowing us the opportunity to come into the buildings and maybe interrupt a little of some of the classes, but honestly, when we were in the classes, you know, they didn't miss a beat. I mean, you know, we were there, we were kind of fly, we were big flies on the wall, but we were there. But the instruction continued, and I was really impressed by that. We actually got a chance to get on the school bus and drive around and, you know, load up and unload and, you know, and I took notes the entire time, because that's just kind of what I do, but nonetheless, really observed some things. And we also had a chance at the high school to see BAN and have them practicing. And believe it or not, there's an instructional component to BAN, and we were able to witness that. And so those are just some of the things that you might not otherwise understand or see, because you're not in the buildings, and it was refreshing as board members to be able to tour the facilities, every building, and kind of see firsthand what's going on and kind of what our dollars, how our dollars are being spent and how, how they're being used in the classroom. So I wanted to, again, thank the administration and thank the Superintendent for the opportunity to do that.
Mr. Powers?
You, you know what you said.
And I was just going to say one more thing. End of April, all of May gets really, really, not that school isn't busy all year, but gets very busy with a lot of events coming up. There's concerts, award ceremonies, banquets, different recognitions. So just keep, if you're interested, keep a close eye on the calendar, because there is a lot that is coming up that some things you might not want to miss.
Yeah, again, I wanted to thank Superintendent Powers, you and your staff and teachers and the building principals for allowing us to interfere for a day. We don't get to see what goes on a lot in the classroom, you know, when we're, you know, especially if some of our kids are almost graduating or not in buildings that don't know. So it's very, very appreciated by the board, you know, that you were able to put that together and take a day away and, and, you know, show us what goes on. And it was amazing to see, as Mr. Curtis kind of alluded to, the collaborative effort amongst the schools, you know, from teachers in the high school. You saw the same, same things being kind of taught down at the, at Wilcox, you know, and to see that, you know, setting the students up for success, you know, beginning at Wilcox throughout their entire journey. I thought it was fantastic. Lunch at Wilcox was amazing. So that was good, too. But it was, it was, it was a good time, and I think something that, you know, I know I appreciate, and I think all the board members appreciate it also. Thank you for that. I got to highlight kind of what we see and, and the importance of, you know, what we do and what the staff, you know, what the teachers, what the principals, what the administration does, and, and what we want to continue, and that, you know, really stresses and pushes the point forward, you know, as to how important Issue 3 is coming up on May. So, you know, we want to keep those educational opportunities available. We want to keep highlighting students coming up here and winning state and, and national recognition. We want to continue to, to have schools, you know, we've had five schools, all five of our buildings in the past two years have one state and national recognition in one form or the other, which is amazing. It's 100% of the, 100% of our buildings in this district. You know, that, that speaks volumes as to what goes on, you know, and, and we want to be able to continue to do that. So I appreciate that. I appreciate the work that everybody does, you know, and, and I think one thing I do want to touch that I think kind of got overlooked, you know, when, when we say that we are stewards of the community's dollars, you know, we, we really are. And, and, you know, the fact that, you know, the state of Ohio mandated that as a, as a graduation requirement, everybody has to be CPR certified, when they make that mandate, they don't say, "Well, here's $10,000 for you to be able to do that." You know, so instead of spending that money out of our coffers, you know, we, we have an administrative team with the foresight to be able to look and, and combine a partnership with university hospitals, which helped us get the, you know, the scoreboard, but into that is value-added dollars, you know, that now we have our staff certifications, our juniors certifications, our AED training, all paid for as, as, you know, as part of that contract. Those are dollars that we're not spending, those are tax dollars that we are not spending, and we're able to, you know, put towards programs like, you know, the, the business course, the academy, and, and things like that, you know. So, you know, that, that in and of itself, just quick math, is, is $8,000 in those three, three classes of juniors taking that, you know, that, that is paid for. So I appreciate the effort and the collaboration that, that we have there, and I think that needs to be noted, because too many times, you know, things get looked over. And, and so I appreciate that, and I really want to make a point of that. So thank you very much for the continued, you know, looking at different ways to, to accomplish our end goal.
I want to mention just one thing on, on the job development side, since you reminded me. Just yesterday, there's a nonprofit called Conexus with, in conjunction with Summit County, all the chambers and various groups put together 200-person conference. The theme of it was Internet of Things, the IoT, if you've heard that term. But it was representatives from many different schools, Akron School, 6th District, which I didn't even know what that was.
I didn't even know what that was, I keep hearing 6th District. I thought Twinsburg was the only district that mattered. No offense, Mr. Mangus. But what was interesting, I turned around when I, when I get there, and who's there but Norm Potter all day? We took a selfie in front of one of those drawings, what they do where they describe what's going on at the conference the whole time. So, we were representing Twinsburg, but it was a very informative conference, everybody's really trying to pull together to solve a lot of the problems that maybe House Bill 512 thinks it's solving, which it isn't, the actual real work that's going on. Someone I've known for 20 years, used to be at a publication, is now with United Way and doing an academy at Akron City Schools. I go, hold on, and I dragged her over, I go, you need to meet Norm, and you guys talk academy, and I walk away. But that's the kind of interaction I, and it was, that was just yesterday, held down in Akron, an all-day conference. So, Twinsburg was representing once again.
Mr. Powers?
Nothing to say, ma'am. Thank you.
All right. And congratulations, too. I think you did very well for your first time handling this.
I was just working them all out. Each individual motion.
That being said, there is a need for an executive session, so I'll make a motion that the Board, that the Board of Education enters into executive session at 8:31 to discuss employment and compensation of public employees and the discipline of a student as per Board of Education Policy 0166A. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Mr. Felber, second. Mrs. Powers, can you please call and roll?
Mr. Slura?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
The Board is now in executive session, and I don't see any need for action once we reconvene.